Seven o'clock, we have a forum it looks like, so let's call to order and you to roll call please.
Schwartz Fisher.
Here.
Dennis.
Here.
Howard.
Here.
Weller.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
Sampson.
Here.
Scott. Frank Cartwell, he will not be here.
He did check in, so he's excused. Um, approval of the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
That being.
All in favor to approve the agenda as written, all favored?
I agree.
Opposed? Minutes from May twenty seven, twenty twenty five meeting, anything on there that is uh? I, I, I thought it was all there, it looked pretty good to me. A motion to approve the minutes made by the point seven, twenty twenty five.
Salute.
Uh, do I have a second?
Yes, yes I do.
All clear?
Aye, aye.
Uh, public comments on non-agenda items, if there's anybody out in the public that has a comment on non-agenda items, Mr. Snyder?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Schwartz Fisher, just a clarification, corridor study discussion, old business, does that count as an agenda item? Or a non-agenda item, I know that when you say non-agenda items, you're basically saying there's time for the public to give input as a concern your hearing for any rezoning or site plans. This is, would this be open seats to make a comment when you're discussing that, or do you want to hear from me now at the end?
Well, the corridor study discussion is on the agenda, so.
So.
If you'd like.
I will then.
If you'd like. That'd be okay.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, anybody else in the public, uh, non-agenda items? Okay, uh, let's go to new business. Case PC number five dash twenty twenty five, public hearing to consider a rezoning request from one family residential to uh, general business R two B for a parcel on sixteen oh three Epler Road, uh, tax parcel numbers listed here as submitted by Philip and Anne Duran. Uh, so this is a public hearing and so what we'll do is we'll uh, I'll have staff summarize the details of it and then we'll open the hearing and they'll have comment, take comment from the public and then we'll post public hearing and deliberate and and what goes some kind of decision one way or the other. So, what do you have for us, uh? What was that?
Pull up the, uh, the map that shows the parceling question and I, I hesitated there, sorry, this is a very interesting case. There's several factors. The first factor is, as, as you can see, it's the one in center there in blue, uh, I hope you can see that. Above it, behind it, south of it, and above it on the west side are all parcels that say exempt, that's because they're owned by the tribe. Some of those parcels are already in the tribal trust and are exempt, not just from zoning, but from the township regulations, they're not part of the township. The others, while they may, that they just bought, are still part of the township, but they don't have any, they don't have a zoning, they don't have to follow any of that. So, basically, uh, we have an island there. Second point is that the, the master plan indicates that these, this area is high density residential, which are to be with fit, much better than the R one. To the north of that, just two sets of lots, or well, three, four, five, what is it?
It's hard to see.
Three sets.
Three sets, that is already rezoned, that was done by, uh, the township about a year ago, is already rezoned to R two B. The master plan indicates that we, yes, we need to save as much as we can of the open space rural. However, we do need to make more space for higher density development. And the high density development should be near where the, the utilities, the infrastructure is in place, near the city limits. And this is, so with that as background, let me go over the, some of the basic facts. We have a, a four point six three acre parcel. Um, at present, it, it is non-conforming by use, if it's rezoned, it would be conforming. Um, public hearing was advertised, we have not received any comments, uh, from the advertisement or the letters. Um, there were only four letters that needed to go out for this and I'm rezoning, while there's no specific guidelines or cases have given us some guidance that I, I think it'd be good to talk about. Uh, we compare the regulation and minimum lot size now in R one is forty five thousand square feet. In R two B, it's twenty two thousand, so you think, well, if you could double the lots, but there's also a state land division act that's four land divisions in ten years, they only have four anyway, whether it's R one or R two. Now, ten years from now, they could start over. Um, setback, the side setback, interestingly, presently is ten foot in R one, in R two, it's twenty feet. Setback, everything else is, well, I shouldn't say everything, setback in the front is the same thirty feet. In the rear though, goes from twenty five to thirty five feet, so again, more setback in the rear. Um, but they are allowed a little higher lot coverage from thirty to thirty five percent. Principal uses, mainly what we're talking about is in changes so that you can use multi-family housing, you cannot do that in R one. Then there's a, a number of other things to think about besides the, uh, the master plan that we talked about, future land use and the community goals. On environmental compatibility, one of the guidelines that has been used, compatibility with surrounding property. Now, a lot of the surrounding property is, you know, uh, a little more on the commercial side. So that one, I, you've got to consider, but across the road is farm and residential. Reasonable use, can the property be reasonably used as currently zoned? Um, with what's around them on the casino, can it continue as of R one standalone? Good question. Demand for use, are adequate sites available elsewhere that are already properly zoned? Uh, there's very few with the adequate utility infrastructure available other than this area right near the city. Is the proposed change out of scale with the needs of the community? We've seen enough studies and discussed the version of people, we need some higher density residential. Would one more be enough? And that's what led to the, uh, the recommendation as a thought from staff that you consider those to the north and rezone everything, so it's one complete strip all the way to the existing R two B, rezone that where the arrows are right now. Spot zoning, um, with the zoning that's around it, it probably wouldn't be spot zoning even if it's rezoned by itself. Was there a mistake in the original zoning classification? Probably not, but for the area has altered dramatically. When it was originally zoned, that entire area was for. So, the board has some considerations and we recommend you listen to the input that you have and we'd be glad to answer any further questions.
When you talk about utilities, is there water sewer out that far?
They have talked that they can get it from the casino. Or the casino has mentioned that they can run it over more, can?
Yeah, the, the tribe has, has let us know that they would be willing to share their utilities with surrounding relatives.
And Vantage View subdivision is city water and sewer.
Yes, that's right here. Yeah, I can't turn out just these lines.
Right on, any other questions? For staff before opening it up?
I, I guess the, the only question I have, so while with consent it makes sense to take the other three parcels, the R to, from R one to R two, are we better off doing that proactively or weighing to those landowners?
That's why I brought it up for you to consider, it's our recommendation, we provide.
It would be the same process, you have to have a public hearing, we notify the property owners and, you know, it's not something that could be done tonight.
It'd have to take another month.
Yeah, at least.
And then would you do the, would you do the farm across the road as well, since you're doing the ones on the, on this, on the east side, would you turn to the west side or?
That's a big, big parcel, yeah.
Well.
Pretty good, Sean, I would, I, my mind would say no, but it's up to the board, what you want to recommend, and then it's up to the township board for the finalization.
I think before we go into that, I think we need to get some feedback from the community and see what we have.
Yeah, I think the applicants are here.
Yeah, so what we'll do is, if there's any other questions for staff, I'll.
And we'll come, we can come back to that.
Yeah, we'll come back or discuss.
I'll cut that off. Did we open, Keith, did you open the public hearing?
Not yet, I'm, I'm a pro too. Um, so when we open up this, uh, public hearing, uh, the procedures are, uh, you can stand up and offer a support or, uh, oppose opposition, but you get three minutes to speak your piece and we have a timer going and we're trying to keep the meeting moved, not to cut you off, but that's what we've been trying to do, so. Uh, so we're gonna open it up, uh, I'd like that, if the applicants would like to introduce their thought process for the rezon, I guess I'd like to offer you this moment to do so.
Sure. Um, fill there in and, 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 uh, so I've owned the property for about seven years now, and even in that time, the, uh, the use around, there's been a couple of sales, there was a vacant property that curtselled to the north, that said exempt, was privately held and the tribe purchased that, um, I'm not sure where it stands in the process of going into the actual tribal lands, but it is their property. Then I understand they bought the other parcel, the forty acres to the south, so increasingly that their ownership has surrounded us there and then also I just keep track of the, um, recent change in the master plan use, which seemed to change and encompass that area to, for the growth for R two, so, uh, not exactly sure, you know, what I would do with it, of course, because not to get ahead of myself, so that's why I applied for the rezoning to just, um, try to do something that would fit in that area with the master plan. Done a couple of other projects in Bear Tree Township that have been successful and nice residential projects, so, um, and familiar with the process, so it seemed for our use, which we actually live there right now, um, but as instead it's things have changed, so we're just looking at trying to do something that fit with the master plan. And then if we were okayed in the process, then we can develop some sort of an idea to allow for some more housing.
Does the tribe ever share their plans?
They, they did meet with us a couple of years ago and they, everything was conceptual, but they, they wanted to, you know, leave the township and their plans include multi-family residential, medical, um, commercial, they have a whole host of uses planned, none of which are single family housing. So they, they had a whole campus.
For that area.
For that area, yeah.
Uh, does anybody have, uh, we'll come back to the questions, uh, if there is some to the application, I guess what I'd like to do is ask and recognize anybody from the audience who'd like to speak, either in opposition or, uh, support.
You want to open, did we open?
We did, we did. Before I offered.
Okay.
Sorry, that's all right, sorry, um, yes, sir.
Yep, here, to me it sounds like a ghost of the flow in that area, just interested, has the tribe ever just given permission to use their water from their source and has that ever been actually done?
Verbally, they've given it, it's not been done that I'm aware of neither.
Neither.
At least, at least in Resort Township, I don't know about in Bear Creek Township.
Sounds like it's constant.
So, that's a comment, not necessarily in support or.
Oh, I just, just, yeah, no, I'm, I'm, I'm in support.
Observation.
Yeah, I'm in support, I just, observation, I just think, yeah, you might be something right, you obviously, if you're gonna move ahead and think you're gonna use your water.
Right.
But this isn't a site plan review for any specific use thing, as a reason, so there's a question, how far are you going on a reason?
Good point. That's fine.
Hi, I'm Susan Morley, twenty six fourteen West Sheridan Road, and so I live up the road and I'm afraid I'm not in favor of passing this, um, just because the neighborhood, like everything else is mostly single family residential. And that's what, everything was zoned when we bought there, and I just like that feel. With a high density residential, it allows like up to five to twelve family units per acre, so it's really high density. And I don't think our infrastructure can support that. The stormwater is a problem on Epler Road, we have lots of flooding and erosion already there, so with more, um, more people, you're gonna have more flooding and more pavement, you're gonna have more flooding, more problematic there. Um, and also just the traffic, like that's kind of going through a residential area, already a lot of people cut through on Sheridan, it's getting pretty busy. Um, and that's a residential area. Um, also it, um, decreases property values of the single family homes that are near there. And I know a lot of it is farmland and that's beautiful and, um, I thought part of the plan was to save kind of that feel of the area of Resort Township. So, in closing, I urge you to deny this rezoning, um, I think it undermines the intent of the Resort Township plan and puts a strain on the infrastructure and disrupts the character of our single family homes and, um, I think our community has built a thoughtful low-density planning that protects our natural resources, I mean, that's why most of our, us are up here is to see nature and enjoy nature, um, so please, um, preserve this, preserve what makes our township such a special place to live and not overdevelop.
Thank you, Susan. Anyone else?
Chris Morley, I live at twenty five ninety six West Sheridan Road. I guess I'm not really in favor of it as well either, I mean, I'm trying to understand or, you know, or looking to just build more homes on there, because I know we're a builder. And, uh, just to put, you can subdivide the prob, property, I mean, that kind of thing, I, I guess I, it, it opens, I think, a box that is gonna allow more development to then come into this area because it has been, if you change it to, you know, an R two B.
Thanks, Chris.
Also, my understanding with the R two B is you can have like multi-family residential, but also like retail and that sort of.
I'm waiting for Dave to have a comment, but it sounds like you're taking us a pretty good listen to me.
I'm just listening.
Uh, okay, um, well, is there anyone on Zoom that's, uh, tuned into us that I can ask on?
We do have one participant on Zoom, um, Scott, would you like to make a comment, if you would, you can raise your hand. Yep, he is asking to be on mute.
No, I have no comment, thank you.
Thank you.
We're gonna, decent. Okay, well, I think everybody spoke that, uh, could I respond to one of the comments?
Yes.
Uh, this was regarding what is allowed there, even under special conditions, there's no strictly commercial, under special conditions, you could get a funeral zone, paternity lodge, uh, you could get professional service of hairdressers, but not pure commercial, and that is under special conditions. And either way, even if they don't do special conditions, they have to come in for a permit, the building permit, or the zoning permit, but with special conditions, they have to meet certain criteria, just to clarify that, so there are some that would be allowed with condition. Would that be considered, uh, a, a, a special use permit at that point?
Yes.
And so they would be coming before us again once, right, before the board could.
When there's a use plan, plus the site plan on top of it.
And, and there'd be a public hearing too, so it's around the property owners.
Oh, and the other thing to clarify too, was talked about on master plan, I looked that up, the future land use map showed that only the high density on the east side of the road, on the little Travis Bay side, they banned, I got wet in this, but it does show this parcel, everything north and even some south as being future. You can, yeah, heavy, heavy density, imagine it, leave, um, a blow up of it is also in the master plan, you can see it easier on that.
Yeah, I bet everybody wants to go on the board.
Okay, page twen, thirty five if we pass.
And the, whoa, the one we're talking about is that little piece that sticks out, but you can see even below it, there is some that is also high density residential, but everything to the north, including what is already rezoned.
Yeah, this is the subject property right here.
Yeah.
So the brown is high density?
Yes.
Yes. But not on the other side, that is still low density.
I think that's currently R one, correct?
Yes.
Is, is that, is that part of the upper farm there, is that what that means?
Yes.
And so, and that's not a farm forest, but that's an R one?
Yes.
Interesting.
That's R one.
Interesting.
Most of the farm forest is further to the west and or south.
Okay, what's this?
That's the current zoning map.
Yeah, here's a current. So, property is, the, so this one right here, yeah, yeah. Yeah, so farm forest is a lot, but it's not close to the city. That's all R one.
Well, I think without any other comment from the, I can close the meeting, or close the hearing, I should say. And then we can also take, I'm, I'm welcome to take a couple of questions if there is any, as the board deliberates, so we close that at seven twenty four again and well, let's start with questions to the applicant and or staff and, um, I think that the big thing is, is, uh, the planner's, uh, review list here is pretty, pretty objective, I mean, that's, that's what we have to go by. And only one that I, there's a couple that stand out to me, uh, in his findings is that, uh, our future land use map, which he just pointed out, was, we're directing all the higher density towards that because that's the only infrastructure that's close by. And when we looked at that master plan, uh, we identified where the infrastructure was within our township and one is the US thirty one corridor and up through the Parkview and, and Epler Road up that direction, it doesn't go all the way, but that's where Sheridan and that's where some of it is and could be extended, so that's why, you know, those were changed to R two back in, oh gosh, what did we do that about a year ago? Uh, we had a hearing and, and we didn't have a lot of opposition to the neighborhood, as I recall. Um, had very few people show up at the meeting and there were a couple of commentaries, but it wasn't in great opposition to it. So, we thought that, that made a lot of sense, uh, during the post that is future land use, higher density, because of the infrastructure chapter, so, uh, that's kind of the background of why those first ones got uh, changed, uh, through the process, it was a hearing and everything, so, uh, I don't know that I have opposition necessarily to changing that, I do have concern, you know, of this whole area about the traffic and everything as we, as this becomes higher density all through here, you know, I'm noticing it on Intertown. Uh, I've been out there almost thirty years and, you know, I've seen Intertown change and, and resort pipe change, the traffic pattern. This inevitably will change the traffic pattern. Uh, I'm not sure you can hundred percent stop that, but people are cutting the corner from highway to highway is what I've noticed, because I've gotten behind people and they don't, they're not here in the township, they're cutting the corner through to, so they don't have to go down the stoplight and go across. And I, I see it every day, because that's my way to work, so, uh, some of that traffic pattern is that. Uh, others is just people who live there, you know, so I, I don't know how to stop that a hundred percent. Um, but it seems to me with the, with the tribe making their forward, uh, progress, they're buying up property and R two up to the north, the, we have, I said, we have those R one properties in between, um, you know, those, if we did this, if it was suggested that we did this, uh, to an R two, those would be, want to be looked at, so you don't have a hit and miss, you know, you have a clean border. So, nothing we can do about that tonight, but you could offer it up, uh, at another meeting, at another hearing, at another, so. Anybody have any questions, I mean, there's also a pretty intense use potentially, but as the planner pointed out, it's all special use permit at that point, the most intense and, uh, intensive, uh, I think would be probably a motel that I could find, I think real estate offices and great intensity, but the, with the motels and motorins, that's pretty intense use. Um, rest of it is reasonably, uh, intense, intensive, so. That's my comment, any question, anybody else want, have anything to offer?
And I guess the way, the way I kind of see this is because the tribe does surround them and this is an island, that, that intensity of use is going to happen and we're gonna have no say over it at all. So I kind of revert back to property owner's rights. If this property owner who is in the middle of this island would like that to happen, I kind of go for that idea. And then if the other R ones want to stay R one, I don't see messing with them, but that, that whole area is going to change, there is no doubt. The tribe is gonna do what it's gonna do and it's probably gonna make this little R two division look tiny. Um, that won't be the biggest part of the problem, um, but I, I just kind of go with it's their property, if they want to go, it, it goes along with what's going on, it goes along with future land use, I don't really see any reason to deny. It's their property. If they want to go, it it goes along with what's going on. It goes along with future land use. I don't really see any reason to deny. But I don't know about just blanketing the rest out because that's kind of like. If you really look. That's the the tribes dictating what happens in that area. We're not. So, you know, if the landowners want to go different on those couple of other parcels, then they can come in and we can look at those and. But as far as this one, I go with the landowner's rights.
I agree with that. The only thing I would say is the tribe has owned that for quite a period of time. It hasn't done anything there. Right? So. They may have these plans. I just don't know what's going to happen.
They purchased the other lots.
Well, those are reasonable. The other up to the north, the chunk around.
Right.
Maybe it's been there for a while.
Uh, they also have worked on developments recently and we can't do it all. They're doing the one across the street behind the. The rest units there. So.
Yeah.
Same as the Marriott. Now they're doing the other one and they are looking forward with projects.
I heard. When I worked on the Marriott, they were talking about five portals. So. Thank you to them.
I'm kind of on board with your thought process. If the R ones to the north don't want to change. Unless they come in and request it, I mean. You could offer it, but. Whether we pursue it's another.
I wouldn't proactive to the other ones until something comes past.
That's where I'm at too. I think this is a good point. Mr. Reed, anything?
I totally agree.
Can I make a motion now?
I entertain a motion.
I moved that the recommended approval of the township moved forward with rezoned parcel twenty-four thirteen eighteen twelve dash four hundred dash zero zero one. From R one A to R two B based on the best of Philip and Andrew Rand.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Uh, we have a motion and a second. All in favor on the motion?
Hi.
All opposed?
Back.
And we have one may and one and everybody else support. So.
Okay.
Okay, moving on. Full business. We have another case in front of us. PC. Number one dash two twenty-five. This is leftover from the Gypsa vodka site plan review we did a couple of months ago. Uh, they submitted uh with a conditionally approved special use permit. Uh, this is. What they're submitted for a site plan, uh. Only thing that was left really on it was the uh plantings and the lighting, as far as I know. Correct me if I'm wrong about that, staff. So they submitted that to us. Uh, this uh is not a public hearing. This is just strictly a site plan review. And in your packet, you'll see. Uh, not very detailed uh. Submission. There is a uh couple of notations on there. I mean, most of what they're trying to show us is their planting, but there is actually no lighting whatsoever that I could find on there. So. Is there anything, any other criteria? That they were left to give us other than those two items that you guys know of?
Well, i- in the packet, I included the motion that had all the conditions and and put figure points and chairs point. All of the other conditions are having satisfied. The one condition was to bring a site revised site plan back to the PC first landscaping and lighting. I also included an email that I had with the applicants where I suggested that maybe what they submitted wasn't going to. Sufficient and their response was, well, that's. This, these are my words. Let's roll the dice and see what happens. So no, the the only outstanding thing would be for them to provide a landscaping and lighting plan um to planning commission satisfaction. You know, and I included in the packet and I can pull it up on the screen. What they had previously, I don't know, do that now. Here's the the plan that they submitted for this meeting and the new area is essentially of landscaping that's down in here. This is the landscaping plan they said submitted for the meeting where they got conditional approval. So this was from April. This is before us tonight. So this area here is the handed. While the notary to the right. Down like that.
So since you have that map up, I have a question.
Yeah.
Yeah. What I noticed was on the one, they have a line of trees that we asked for some screening, but on the other one. They have clumps of trees and I just wondered which one they're actually submitting.
There were one dated six, there's one on the screen now that stated six twenty-four twenty-five is the latest.
Latest version?
Yeah, there's many of them are less. Yes.
Essentially less, yeah.
Well, not if you work well, you got to look side by side to feel appreciate that there's some, well, first of all, I don't think we improved this either way because I'm not sure.
No, we didn't.
What's that?
We didn't improve the so- the site plan.
Right, originally the site plan, not the landscaping, not the landscaping. But I guess my question is, is this sufficient for us to approve? And I, my view is it's not, but you have told me otherwise.
It it it, the the planning commission does have discretion to determine that what was submitted is sufficient to be approved. So it's really up to the planning commission to determine whether or not this is going to be a sufficient landscaping plan um for approval.
So we asked, I was not here, so I was not fortunately not involved. Um, so we asked for the lighting.
This is.
And a more detailed landscaping.
Right. And in the motion that was in the packet, I highlighted. What we actually asked for was lighting shall be installed in accordance with township zoning ordinance. So that arguably doesn't have to be on the plan, but what was highlighted screening and landscaping shall be depicted on a revised site plan. That shall be reviewed and approved by the township planning commission prior to the issues of special use permit. So what's hanging out there is the screening and landscaping for you. The lighting, that would solid, we'll have to verify that applies with the zoning ordinance.
We we need something.
Yeah.
Yes, you know, I don't know how many trees that is.
We we specifically asked for this because of the residents. Requests from behind them, not from in front of them down by the road. It was, it's this section on the backside.
Yeah.
On old thirty-four.
Yeah.
And that actually got less than the original. So I guess I. Would like to see something. That, because I mean, they were, we were all here. We all heard what was asked for and what was wanted. I thought there was some understanding of what we were talking about.
They were here.
So I would like to, I would like to see something that kind of met those demands. Because that was the hesitation.
Yeah. And the reason I included the email, what I sent to them was Bay Harper's landscape plan from last month, if you remember. It was very detailed, applied with the ordinance to the letter. So I sent them a copy of that and I said. I'm not telling you what to do, but this is what I think the planning commission is looking for. For a landscaping plan. And their response was, well, we're going to go with what we submitted. And if they make us come back, we'll come back.
Fair enough.
So at that very first meeting, there were a lot of Bay Harper people that were worried about noise. So. They, it looks like they've done less.
Yeah. Now, this is, I think this is, yeah, this, this is old thirty-one.
This sounds like there, it looks like they took, it looks like they moved. It's basically like they were trees for certain spots, they moved them into other spots.
Here and it was on the first.
Less on the back. Yeah, this is from April.
It's went to a road.
Yeah. And they essentially added. You know, they trimmed it down here and added more up front. Still budget the same.
So this looks like that there is picked up and moved stuff on the computer versus actually having a landscape architect. Because this does not look like the landscape architect work.
Yeah. I agree.
Well, most of the time that we we look at a landscape plan. The type of tree, the size is identified and we can count. As staff, I can't do any of that on this. I can't do any of that for you.
We got seven trees. And I don't think anyone's here tonight from, and they knew we were talking about this tonight. Well. Nothing's happened and maybe they couldn't make an emergency, but.
So to be expedite this, I would move that we not accept this and then we send it back to the.
Advocate?
Advocate to come back with a detailed site plan that meets the requirements of the township based on number of trees, aside of trees. Um, and that.
We want to be specific and state a little more uh screening on the rear, like the earlier one or I give them a little guidance like this minute ago. In the motion.
I I would say yes, it needs to, needs to properly screen on old thirty-one and also proper screen upon thirty-one. With the support, they come back. We don't need this, we don't know this as well as you do, but can you all help guide them if they need that guidance?
Sure.
Yeah.
You know, in the section in the zoning ordinance, the section eighteen oh five, that's how landscaping and screening is like.
Yeah, within that, I think there's language in there that describes uh the leaves, the deciduous and non deciduous trees. And I think we need to make sure that they're evergreen versus, because out front that they wanted to plant apple trees, uh, I think it was or.
Yes.
Which is. You know, it looks nice out there what they're doing. I drove by. I think they're doing a great job. Uh, they got a couple of the buildings well along. Uh, it's a beautiful piece of property and. If the language in the ordinance describes better size of trees, minimum size of trees, which I think it does, right? Doesn't it say six to twelve? It says no more than so many feet apart. That's the language that they need to submit, I guess, is what I'm hearing from the board. Um. And as far as the lighting plan goes, there's no lights. You might will with no lighting plan submitted. I probably would be okay uh overlooking that if if it was stated, you know, in the section of lighting is uh eighteen oh three. You know, if they meet, you know, staff can look at the plans and well, this doesn't meet ordinance. I can't sub. I can't give you the permit until this, you know, they they have the. You know, authority to do that or, you know, capability to do that, but the lighting or the vegetation. I think the neighbors were pretty adamant about that, right? It seemed like to me.
In in the way that this, if you remember, not all of the research, but we had that eye doctor at the con thirty-one. That was a similar thing. We approved the site plan, but it was contingent on Google, the landscaping's plan. I send this to the county, so the building department has it and they won't issue an occupancy, occupancy permit until I tell them. All the conditions have been satisfied. So that that'll play out here similar.
Yeah, they work well.
Yeah, until we get a landscaper plan that the planning commission feels is adequate. Um, they're, they can build, but they're not going to be able to hold things very good.
So I actually have a motion on the table right now, but I I guess I'm going to ask you if you would like to. Add to that motion to say, you know.
I have one more question on the lighting. Just, no, you know, I was just gonna say because it's special use. Did I think if I can't remember, did we have any other considerations that we had mentioned about lighting? Other than just what's in the ordinance? Well, we know. We just said lighting shall be installed in accordance with the township's own ordinance. Thank you.
Which is pretty well stated.
Yeah.
Down lighting, shielded.
Yeah.
So many perv. I think you have to have a, I think it describes how many. Their parking.
Yep.
Things like that or so.
Do they have to show us that lighting plan before we prove it or do they just set the meet the requirements of that, do you know?
Yeah, just meet the requirements. Thank you.
Somewhere in your communication, I would, I would like it mentioned. That they need to take into consideration the the neighbor's concerns because part of their. Part of their approval was. That they would do some mediation or remediation of their concerns in that area. To minimize norms. So.
Have your vegetation along uh old US thirty-one uh to meet the the standard or more? Because I think thicker is better back there.
Yeah.
And that's what I was going to offer you up in your motion.
Well, I think, I think the motion that would be modified to say um. I would believe we reject the current plan as delivered. By the advocate uh and send it back to them to approve both the old thirty-one vegetation and also the thirty-one vegetation. To meet the goal, to meet the requirements of the township's.
Conditions.
Conditions.
Well, what you could do, you could, you could. And make a motion, motion to postpone approval of this plan. Direct staff to request a revised landscape plan from the applicant that complies with section eighteen oh five of the ordinance. And ask that the applicant increase and improve the landscaping along old US thirty-one to prevent noise spill over from the neighbors.
That's the direction, that's the directive they need to hear. So they know where to go with this. So.
If you say it that.
You're not saying thirty-one.
They, well, change that and give us a description so we know what kind of trees and stuff because they, yes, that's part of eighteen oh five, but they sure didn't.
And I'll make sure they understand what section eighteen oh five means. I mean, do we think they need more screening, more landscaping down off thirty, US thirty-one here?
Uh, I'd like to see, I'd like to see a site plan of the whole parcel. That'd be good.
That's hard to, that's hard to say.
Not just that.
I will comment on one thing there. I I was in there today. And if you guys look at this, what they did give us. If you look to the northeast, there is a magnificent view that goes right through this gap in the tree line. And if they close that off, that view's gone. And that's, you know, that's what we've been all about is views and vistas for, you know.
But I'd like to see this area.
Opened up or.
I'd like to see the whole view, just see what it is.
I'm okay just, just between our board is that I'd like to see that view left to us.
Right, right.
That's magnificent.
Right.
But but from to the west.
Yeah.
They're not showing us.
Are you referring to the view?
Right.
They're from there, that whole.
And that's, this is the wedding venue. That's the money shot right there.
Yeah, I'm money shot.
It's also.
Necessarily one of that.
A good amount too, though.
Pardon?
Wedding that that's, it's relatively elevated too. So you're putting just, you know, trees in, you know, obviously you're not going to put in big oaks, pretty important. Smaller trees, it'll still have the, you saw the view. I'm not asking, I'm not asking something to kill the view.
Um, I think his suggest, uh. Mr. Dennis suggests just show us some more of the parcel to the west and what that vegetation looks like would be helpful.
You're not sure the whole parcel. Well, I think and and I'm speculating, I was going to ask them tonight, but they, you know, they did submit this part as part of the original approval as well.
I will also comment that I drive by there pretty much every day. Uh, they've had a company in there placing uh trees and um sprinkler system. In that area that they were, uh, suggested they were going to plant the, I guess they were apple trees or cherry trees.
Is that here?
No, it's to the west, a little farther, more closer to the entrance, more closer to the entrance. So I think they've already started that part of. What they showed us originally.
Yeah.
Well, they submitted the apple tree plan and we didn't mix the apple tree.
Right.
No, no.
So I mean, that's what they're doing.
They're going with what they originally planned.
Yeah.
Seeing what they can find.
Yeah. I'm okay with asking for more site plan to the west. You know, more.
Yeah, yeah. Sure.
Yeah, complete parcel view.
Like, we need a discussion of what their plans are.
Okay.
How many trees, what size, what type?
Have your vegetation to the US thirty-one side and. More of a view of the site plan. So the motion on the table is.
I like Ken.
Well, Ken stated that. It was perfect.
Yes.
It's it's basically come back with good plan so we can figure what's going on and it meets the requirements of the. Yes, it's, it's basically come back with good plan, so we can figure what's going on, and it meets the requirements of the, of the code. And this, this is not, this is not real work, this is what they're doing on their computer.
So here's, here's one comment I want to make further. This site is unusual in that most of the infrastructure is already there. This is not a raw parcel that they're coming to us and they gotta put the roads in and the power and all there, this is already there. So, uh, I have less concern about that part of the site plan showing, it's already there. The, the parking lots there, the road, so really what we're looking for is a little bit more.
Landscape.
Landscaping plan and if they can bring that to us. Likely. You know, it would be better received.
And they're looking, looking for noise abatement and light, and light abatement.
Yeah.
By use, by using landscaping.
Yeah.
And I think seeing an overview of the whole area, not just this angle. That would look.
Uh, I think, I think, uh, using Ken's motion, we need a second, uh, using. His motion. With revisions from, suggested by the zoning administrator. Do we have a second? Yep. All in favor to, uh, send this back, postpone. And send it back, uh, say aye. All opposed, so. So I think, I think they can show us what we need, we just gotta see it.
Yeah, and I'll reach out to him if he's on.
Yeah, they want to hold a hundred things.
Oh, before you leave, um. Sorry to interrupt, so the, the procedure with the rezoning is the planning commission makes a recommendation, that's been done. We next have to send it to the county planning commission, they get thirty days to comment. After that comment period, they'll go to the township board for approval. So I'll keep you apprised of the process, um, but we're not, we're not done. Yes.
This is just a, that was just a recommendation at this point, that has to go through the rest of the, rest of the way up the channel.
All right, thank you, we appreciate it.
Old business still, we have student member update. Uh, I don't know where we're at, we have a couple that have been working on it and you, have you heard any word or any input?
One person. They're gonna turn it in and I haven't heard from the other two. I'm writing that I haven't received anything.
Marty was watching on the emails and she was afraid that she missed, so that's the update, so at this point her isn't, is, yeah. Uh, also additionally, I think this is your last meeting, isn't it?
I think so, unless, unless you won't leave the next one, I don't know.
But you're, you're kind of stuck until December, did anybody tell you that?
It's mine here.
Thank you very much, it's been nice having you on the board, you've had a. A good mind to have some input and we appreciate it.
Thank you, Matt.
Done a great job.
Yeah, thanks, thanks for coming, your insight from your point of view is, I think, so. So it's still in process, we gotta find a, a replacement, which will be hard. Uh, corridor study discussion. At the last meeting, uh, we put this on this agenda and it was going to continue on, and I think how we left it. Is that we're going to try to put together, uh. More of a comprehensive. Information for our board. Um, there is information already out there, is how we left it, I mean, the state of Michigan knows the traffic pattern, they know the traffic count. What we were looking for is infrastructure where it starts and stops exactly. Uh, we were looking for. Commenter or, uh. The information from the state, just to have in our hands. So when it would be brought to us on, as far as traffic and increased traffic, we know how to. You know, talk about it with some intelligence. Uh. And I think those are the two biggest item, but I, if there was more, anybody?
Or are we also looking for potentially a new classification?
Like an overlay district, yeah. And, and what, what I've done so far, what staff has done so far is, I've. Reached out to MDOT, reached out to the city, I've reached out to the county. And I'm in the process of collecting some data from them to bring back, I don't have it tonight, but I, I will bring that at a subsequent meeting. Um, but I, I have talked with the county. And more along the lines of that overlay district and Emmett County and their zoning ordinance, they actually have a. Overlay zone and they call it, um. They don't call it a corridor overlay zone, they call it access and management overlay zone. And I can share a copy of it with planning commission for, you know, next month's meeting, but what I thought was interesting and, and what the county shared with me. In that area and it's along M one nineteen, it's along sections of thirty-one, um, they require. Whichever road agency has jurisdiction to sign off on the site plan before they get final approval. So they kind of put the responsibility on. The applicant to get approval from MDOT, get approval from the road commission, um, on what their conceptual plan is. And then bring that to the township or to the county, um. During the site plan review process. So it eliminates all that, I, I liked it too, that's why, you know. So I, I have a copy of it, I didn't make copies of it, because I thought I would include it in next month's package, but. You know, and that's just one facet of this, but I thought that was a really good idea.
Great idea.
Yeah.
I know that in other parts of the country, uh. There is, uh. The you, the required permissions in Florida. The developers have a fee to improve roads. Uh, I think it's called an impact fee, and if that means extending infrastructure, uh, improving the road. I, I don't see us as a region adopting that, because I don't think.
By law, we can in the state of Michigan.
By law, we can't by state of Michigan, so, but I just thought it was interesting, it kind of put it on the developers to.
Oh, definitely.
Several states. But we cannot, so by putting it into the local jurisdiction of whoever's in charge of the road, which in our township, I believe the county handles. Uh, most of our rural roads, um. They look for input, correct me if I'm wrong, from the township and the township board trustees, but at the end of the day, the county has to say it.
Yeah.
And so, uh, as far as improvements and. So, but it, it is the. Audience asks us question, we can give them directive, we have some information in front of us. Um, some of which we already had, but this gives us an arctic harvest. Now, I know that Dave had some comments and I guess I'd ask you to.
This is true.
Dave, is this gonna take longer? Is this gonna take longer than three minutes?
And I, and I appreciate hearing where the discussion is now, because I did not want to say anything prior that might sound offensive. And make an assumption that, that is not fair to make. Um, my biggest concern is that when you talk corridor study is that there's this tendency to focus just on. Traffic, that's a big part of it. Um. But right now, we're running a bike path up there. We're running speed zones that make absolutely no sense to anyone that doesn't live here that start at. What, forty? Forty, then it goes forty-five, if you have, if you see it by a guy that's holding a bike over his head, whatever that. Sign means, you know, if you see a bike bicyclist, what it's supposed to be, or a pedestrian, then you're supposed to slow down, right? Then it says, so it goes forty, forty-five, then fifty, then fifty-five, and it's like. What, how fast do we go? And so, one of the things that I would be concerned about as a resident, and especially as traffic increases, I don't want to really necessarily want to hear. From MDOT that the road can handle fifty thousand vehicles. Um, what I want is for us to be able to have a vision for what is it that we want this corridor to look like? That includes traffic, includes bicyclists, includes pedestrians who right now take their life in their hands when they try to cross that road. What are we gonna do? And so to only say to MDOT, give us what we can or cannot do with traffic. Is really not getting the whole apple, just getting a small bite. So as a resident that has beautiful view from where I live, of the bay, I also now have a beautiful view of thirty-one. And I have now a beautiful view of all these new buildings that are gonna happen to my west. So what I want to know is how are we going to mitigate? All of these changes that have happened, and what's our vision for what the corridors should look like? With buildings, with hotels, that dwarf current businesses that have been there forever. I mean, if I were Gormex, I'd be incensed by that, by the size of this hotel. You can't see Gormex when you come south on thirty-one, and so anybody that hasn't been from the area, that doesn't even know they exist. They drive right by, they're missing out on one of the best soups and salads and soups in the area. So those are the things that I think you need to pay attention to is not just traffic, it's not just MDOT's problem. It's our problem. And we want to have a vision, I hope you have a vision, I hope the trustees have a vision, what is it that you want the corridor to look like instead of? The happenstance that we're starting to see develop now that we're stuck with?
Thank you, Dave, I want to make a comment in our, uh. Our, uh. Master plan, there are actually lists of the things you just touched on, how do we get pedestrians across the highway? Uh, the bike path, which is a whole nother. You know, that is, that's a financial.
It's six years.
It's a financial monster, we're not gonna solve sitting here, but.
Right.
Right. And so that's all actually was listed in the objective portion of. Of that corridor study, it's actually in.
Okay.
In here, so ta- take a read on that and. We don't have disillusioned of solving all that, but we're aware of it, let's, I just wanted to say that. And secondly is, you know, interestingly enough on the Cormac thing is she came up to me after that meeting and she was a little frustrated that. Um, we denied. Nathan on his project request. She says, I'm wanting to retire, we need housing, we need that project, so she was all for.
His project.
That project. You know, and higher density there and, and, and when the hotel came, she. Was not objection to that thing being built right next door, she saw it as opportunity for her business. Walk across there and get a sandwich.
I get that, and now that it's filmed, I bet you'd ask her about the hotel, you'd have a different opinion.
So she, you know, I, I wouldn't feel. Too horribly about that situation right there, so I just wanted to come by that.
I get that, there's always a difference between the theory, the concept, and then what we end up with.
Yeah.
And I'd like to make a comment too, the part of it is, is you have to talk to MDOT because they have the control of what you do within their right of way, we don't, we can't tell them what to do. They tell us what we can.
I'm not asking that, Tim, I'm asking.
The other thing, can I, can I finish, thank you. Um. The other thing is, according to the zoning ordinances, if somebody comes in. With a project. That meets the zoning ordinance. We can't disapprove it. We can't tell them. That it, that they can't do that. So we are limited on what we can do. I just, you know, we, we, we can have brand visions. But also, everybody may not agree with that vision either, your vision may not be the same as mine. So, you know, there's a lot of factors that go into this, but, you know, we can only, we have to, we have to, as the planning commission. Have to work within. Our limits, which are limited by what MDOT says we can do on one thirty-one, what the zoning. Says we can do or approve or disapprove, so we can't just. Go with our own visions, so there are limitations to what we.
I think the corridor, thank you, Kevin, and thank you, Dave, I think that this corridor study is. Is a good thing to look at, the more information we can have, the better, I mean. You, if you look at Traverse City. In order to get a pedestrian bridge across the highway down there to the beach from the state park. Uh, they had to jump through so many hoops, they submit plans, they submit engineering, they submit, and that's what would have to happen, and that's, of course, that requires funding from. The township and, but somebody to draw the plan up and say, you know, we, we want a pedestrian crossing here, and so, I mean, that's, that's a long-term goal for sure, if that's what. How do you remediate pedestrian crossing on that highway, because that's a busy highway, um. That's what would have to happen, because that's how Traverse City handled it. Um. So, within this discussion, if you want to look at pedestrian crossing. I mean, that, that's the long, that would be a long-term look. But if you don't at least look and talk about it now, it never does. Resolve itself, so.
I have, where, where are pedestrians going?
Pardon me?
Where, where are they going? Park. Against the park.
East park.
White path when it existed.
Yeah.
Like that, we went down.
Yeah, I, I, is there not, is there not bindable crossing the road? That's, that'd be the question.
I think if there were a safe crossing, there would be a lot more people that would have something.
Well, I think as the growth, it's growing. I mean. As, and we, if you look ahead ten years, let's just say. And let's just say that the summit gets built and built out, there's people there, you've got. If he does take on that project. And it gets approved and he builds, there's people there, you got people in Parkway coming down Blackberry. They're gonna want to go across there in ten years, I mean, there's just gonna be more people.
Cross.
There's not a good access, there's not a good access point on the south side of the road.
There is not.
That's my point, is it? And we, we, we probably get spun around on that conversation pretty easily.
Really easy. But I think what we can do, at least short-term goal, and I think that was the whole reason of this corridor study, is to get. Gather the information. He's starting to do it now, he's already got some, the feedback to us. So let's, we're on it, we're in the gathering of information process right now. Dave, and so I think if we can keep gathering. Then we can have a more serious discussion about what's, what is achievable, can we achieve this or not? Is it, is it feasible financially? Maybe not, maybe it is. So gather the information, let's keep this on the agenda and we'll keep going, I think.
Nobody wanted to cross that highway when it was a swamp and a cement plane.
I used to go across there. Hunt deer. Housing. We have some, one here is going to give us an update.
Hi, this is Catherine from Housing Board. Um. Some events to note that are coming up as far as. Information about incentives that are available, um, reasons why you would be interested in this content is because. You will probably eventually have to deal with approval of certain aspects of incentive programs with some projects. Um, whether it's a small one or a large one. So for the elected and or appointed officials in all of our townships, we're trying to encourage people to learn a little bit more about housing TIF. Um, it's, if you've heard that term, it's the same as Brown Hill, but now housing is a use that is considered. Uh, acceptable for that funding mechanism, um. And there are a couple of workshops coming up, there's a one-on-one, which we've already done one, um. In person at Beard Brewery, but I don't think we saw anyone from Resort Township there. Uh, the next one will be on July fourteenth at the Emmett County EMS Building on Epler. Whichever way that is, sorry, it's definitely pointing in the wrong direction, um, and that's going to a- actually be a panel speaker, so it's not just one person. Pouring the crap out of everybody, we'll have Bar Adamson from McLeary in Northern Michigan as a speaker. Um, Susan, Susan Wentz like from Fish Vet, they counsel Emmett County's Brown Hill redevelopment authorities. On the Housing TIF, um, Northern Lakes Economic Alliance will be there, uh, M S U Extension will be there moderating, and of course, myself. So, um, it would be great to see someone to be there, especially since it's close by, um, at the EMS building. So I will share information about it, but it's July fourteenth, one to three P M, there will be coffee and snacks. And it is free to attend, would be great to see a person from here there. Um, Housing Org is also working on. Garnering ten million dollars from the state of Michigan to, uh, essentially grow a revolving loan and emergency fund. And essentially, the goal of that program is to. Help. Piece wheel deals together, offer gap financing when it's needed, because traditional lending with most development projects is. Less than ideal, uh, most likely, uh, kills more deals than we know about, and so, um, we're actively getting involved in growing that. And it's exciting news that it's kind of making its way up in the process of. Actually, maybe hopefully working, so, um. Nothing is certain though, and then, uh, just a quick update, I may have mentioned the zoning atlas project. And then, uh, just a quick update, I may have mentioned the zoning atlas project. Yes, I did to you a few months back. Uh, that is the work of that for Emmett County is underway right now. Um, and so once the first phase of the work is done, as far as coding is concerned and creating the sheet files that will encompass the entire county and what can be built where, um, phase two will start up and that will include infrastructure location, which will hopefully help inform the conversation that you've been having about your corridor setting. Um, and that information is just, it's just going to be available. So, uh, we're not asking anything from you for that. And, um, I think that is all that I have, unless you have questions.
Uh, one is the ten million that they're trying to raise from the state. You know where that fund, where that fund's coming from?
I should know that off the top of my head, head, but they're asking for an allocation, so it's.
And the other question is, do you have any updates on the projects going on, uh, downtown?
Yeah, but most of the projects that are, that have been underway as far as construction is concerned, they're all estimating being online in the fall of this year. Even the block, which is what they're calling it now. Um, because everything is moving very quickly with those buildings, for sure. There's a couple of other potential projects that will pop up, um, in various areas close by. Uh, whether they make it through approval processes to be determined, right? That's always a, a major hangup. So, um, but yeah, things are moving very fast.
I'd like to make one further comment. Uh, in the process of, uh, the applications to get into these, uh, housing. Uh, I know, I know of one person firsthand. She's a nurse, traveling nurse. She's trying to find a place to be. Uh, she actually looked online at the application process and there's different uh, levels of, uh, your financial well-being that applies towards whether you get approved for it. Well, she actually makes too much money to get into these projects, but this is what we're building these for, for these for housing people that are working here. She wants to stay here. She's three years in and she'd like to stay. But so, I, I don't know in your workshop, I can't make that on July fourteenth, but maybe you could give them a little feedback. And I think that's being, some of this, these projects are being dictated because of the funding is, you know, you have to not make very much money to get approved. Well, you know, there are some professional people here that need housing.
Absolutely.
So I don't know how you, how you would rectify or how you remedy that, but just a comment and feedback. Take it with you and do what you want. So.
I'll just say in response that it does depend on the program and how, what the income restrictions are. A lot of those that had to get super creative with funding and still have gaps, even though they're getting built right now. So, um, but they're safe, hopefully, fingers crossed. They're just market rate units are going to be something that will help, say, a traveling nurse. For example, yesterday I had a conversation with one who said, I don't need anything affordable. That's not for me. I make two hundred thousand dollars a year. I just need a piece of it. So it's really just adding to the inventory period. So any new thing, hopefully that isn't luxury will help that sector. But there's plenty of other folks that don't make that much money that will be able to qualify for those units. So.
Anybody else got questions? Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. In your program, we know that it's still open session. Is there any applications in at this point? Anybody know also? I don't know of any either, but we'll keep on looking. Correspondence, zoning administrator report, you all have got that. Anybody have questions for him? Or comments? Planning commission comments. Report from the township board of representatives.
Better town road work started. I made the shake coming in that way.
What are, what are we doing, Tim? Are we resurfacing? So in the county.
Scat job.
Scarify, what do they call that?
Scarify.
Scarify.
Like what they did with this ant.
Correct.
It was a tough.
Pretty quick, dirty. It goes quick. I was pretty impressed last year when they did ours.
Um, Warper Road dock had been replaced. I see that. Um, someone backed it loading and fed the boat off and forgot to unhook the boat from the trailer and took off, pulled the back out. So. Here the dock replaces now on the other side. So now it's on the west side. Um, at a library presentation. Um, one thing, so I did bring up the, um, potentially zoning discussion and corridor study, if you will. Board was very, um, thoughtful on that. We're overseeing. So I think we'll have some support there. Um, one thing that did come up was, uh, sheriff was at the meeting, comes to all the board meetings. And we had a, a little bit of a discussion regarding blight. Uh, up in advantage view, um, there's a residence up there and, um, he went and visited with them and had some discussions. And, um, you know, when he was done, and there were some folks in the audience that at the last couple of board meetings that have had questions about blights and what can we do, what we can't do, and why aren't we doing anything? And, um, so I asked him, you know, what, you know, what power does he have or the county have? And I mean, even the sheriff at a county has no real authority to do anything when it comes to blight, which surprised me. Um, if it's a, you know, a child endangerment thing, he can get involved, items like that, but for just blight, there's really nothing he can do. The county doesn't really have any, um, enforcement type objects or things that they can throw out there. So I just bring that up.
Other than maybe the health department.
Yeah, I mean, the health department, if it's a health issue, yes, the health department, or it's not a health.
That'd be a well-being issue there.
Right. There's really not much anyone can do. So there's kind of a gap there, but I bring, I bring that up because, you know, we spent a fair amount of time deliberating on that topic. And, um, it might resurface in our meeting. And it might be something that, I don't know, kind of, you've heard any of the other townships, anybody doing anything new or different or?
No, I mean.
I'm pretty sure, go ahead and answer, but I was, my count is I'm pretty sure Bear Creek has a, a blight ordinance.
See, little driver stuff, West Travers does, um, you know, and they're all very similar.
Right.
But, you know, Melrose does. The way that they're enforces when it's, and I know because I know enforcing it, I mean, it's, there are egregious violations there are. We had a guy in West Travers that literally had garbage spoiled food, garbage all over his front car.
It's complaint driven.
Yeah, it's complaint driven, um, but it's designed to deal with, um, so health safety, lighted issues, not neighborhood dispute.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so how do you go about enforcement over there?
In those communities, they designate the zoning administrator as the enforcement officer. Um, and each of them, pretty much the same, you know, first it's a warning letter.
Yeah.
The property owner gets thirty days to rectify. If they don't, um, I would issue a citation and then I work with the township attorney. And, uh, what he does is he asks them for the district court to issue an order. Yeah, like a payment order.
It's a civil infraction.
Yeah. And, and I will say that I have had success with the district court in Emmett County. The judge, she is pro, uh, anti-blight enforcement. Uh, not all courts are pro zoning and blight and things like that, but the district court in Emmett County, she is.
What? No, I have a question on that, but I don't know if you're done with your reporter or not, but.
So do we have, do we have to put a, or do we have, do we have to ask the township to put an ordinance in? I did drive by that, the house was advantage view. We got a letter, what, month or two ago? Yeah. Doesn't look, I mean, if I was a neighbor, it wouldn't be, I wouldn't be too happy, but we have no enforcement, right?
No, we don't have.
We don't have.
So there goes my question is, letters have been sent out, but it is just suggested from the township.
Right. The only thing we have right now is we do have a dismantled vehicle ordinance. But you have to have two. So you can have one junk car on your, on your property and that doesn't trigger the ordinance. You have two. Um, then I can take enforcement action and on that property advantage view, they, they removed both of those vehicles.
After, after a letter was sent?
After a letter was sent, yeah.
So, so without blight ordinance, with what we have is a letter from the.
With the blight ordinance, you probably have the same, but a letter, but it would be a warning letter before the civil citation.
Right.
But we did spend some time on it.
Right.
It may resurface, it sounds like. There is a couple sites in the township. Uh, but you know, if you drive around the township and you count all the residents, might be one percent or less of the actual lots uh, that are, you know, that would be even falling into the language. So do you, you develop, you know, my question, I don't have the answer. My question is, do you develop an ordinance for one percent? I don't know the answer to it, but I'm just asking.
And, and this is strictly my personal opinion, um, the, the complaints, you know, disregarding the vehicles, but the, the, the blighted conditions complained about advantage view. My opinion, those are best addressed through like neighborhood regulations, housing covenant, it's not a home orders association. Because they're really aesthetic. What's that?
We don't have that.
Advantage view actually does have neighborhood covenants. They should, we were sharing a copy of them. Um, because they're really aesthetic more than health safety matters. Just my personal. Yeah, managed view has covenants, favorite covenants.
I have to look that up.
Yeah.
I think as you go back, the Jarpike, the new subdivisions to the left, the, um, the Oaks and, and back in there, they all have HOA. So they, I think that the. Does Parkview, Dave, have anything like that in place?
Just the covenants like your managed view has.
Have you witnessed anything up in your country up there that is, like the neighbors are all up in arms about it or?
We have one, uh, residence that hasn't done anything with trees that have been destroyed in their yard. They've not mowed their yard since the growing season for grass. Um, there's trash in the back and kids' toys in the front. So it looks similar to the one in advantage view. We just, and it's a shame because the house's previous owner was so fastidious that chickered tree in the front was absolutely sculptured, her red maple. It's like a little round. It's got, how in the hell does she do that? But, yeah, so now it's just.
So you have some covenant. You, you guys could write a letter if you had to.
Yeah, we're ignoring it at this point. We're just, you know, there may be a reason, maybe it's a health reason. We don't know those neighbors very well. That they just can't get out there and get things done or can't afford to hire someone to do it. I don't know. Probably should just show up at their house one day with lawn mowers and
Help them out.
And help them out. See if they have, maybe that would embarrass them once, that they might stay on top of it. We'll see. I might organize it. I like that.
There you go. That's good.
I like helping versus.
Right.
Yeah.
Y'all again.
Um, anything else in the report, Tim?
Um, EBA, we had a short meeting at six o'clock today. Uh, basically just to review and approve the investment. No good cases.
That's kind of what you want, right? Permission or comments? All right, there are none. We'll move on. Public comments on non-agenda items?
Yeah, just one. Um, I want to thank all of you, and I know I always do this, but, um, I don't think people, when they come to these meetings, understand how hard you work. And I, I, obviously out of necessity, I've been attending a lot more frequently than I've ever been to a planning commission meeting before. But now I'm, I guess I'm a little bit of a fly in the ointment for you and which I, I'm curious on what's going on in that uh, area and I want to be involved. And so I do appreciate the work that you do and the amount of time that you take and the group, the guff that you sometimes have to hear from people like me and others. And I know it's hard. And so, thank you.
Why don't you become a student?
Yeah, I'm a lifelong learner, that's for sure.
Thanks, Dave. Uh, items to be reported to the township board trustees. We took two actions, um, you know, we had the rezone, uh, recommendation we approved, uh, to send off the trustees. The other one is, uh, uh, we, uh, sent back the, uh, for an improved site plan from DFT. Uh, not enough information on the plan. Um, those were our actions. I think that's it. Otherwise, it's just agenda items. Uh, next meetings for July twenty ninth, anybody? I don't think I'm going to be here, possibly. I think I have a week out of town, so I'll confirm that. And then if I do, then additionally, you might be up. Is there any cases that you know so far?
Nothing so far. Sure.
Maybe, uh, nothing else on the, uh, so anybody else, if we have one can make it so far? Yep. Um, nothing else on the agenda. Um, we'll adjourn at eight, one fifty-six, I think it's. Thanks, everybody.